He's following you, the Boy Scout is following you.
Okay, the hour having arrived and the fact that we have a quorum, I therefore call this FY 2022 special town meeting to order. Because standing today at a meeting is problematic, we shall not be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. A lot has happened since the beginning of this pandemic, and we live in a time of great science with the vaccines and futures that holds much better for a year ago. I hope you all have had a vaccine or scheduled to get one. However, I'd like to start off with a moment of silence to remember all of those who are no longer with us because of this unusual past two years. Thank you. First, here are some of the ground rules for the meeting today. Per Section 2.2 of the Charter, I am required to appoint a deputy moderator who should complete the town meeting should I become unable to continue. Therefore, I appoint Mr. William Coleman as deputy moderator. This appointment needs ratification of the town meeting. So all of those in favor of Mr. William Coleman as the deputy moderator, please open your car window and hold up your pink voting card. Thank you. All those opposed, hold up your pink voting card. See no objections, Mr. Coleman is the deputy moderator. Those of you not in automobiles, please take a moment right now to turn off or put on vibrate, which I shall do myself, or put all your cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices as a courtesy to your other residents. Those of you in the automobiles, please use your air conditioner or heater only as necessary, no longer than five minutes, and in order to reduce emissions. We would also appreciate it if you would turn off your engines while we're collecting the ballots. We have some non-resident guests with us this evening, this afternoon. If there are no valid objections, they will be allowed to remain. But in no case will they be allowed to vote. They are in an assigned area to be certain that they are not inadvertently accounted. Guests may be allowed to speak, but only if requested by a town official, and only to provide information and not opinions. The Commonwealth requires that the town clerk provide the Attorney General's office with detailed notes of every article and every person who speaks at a meeting. Therefore, I ask that you clearly state your name and street address each time that you speak. There are microphones that can be brought to your automobile by the Boy Scouts, and they will be on an extended boom to maintain social distancing. Please do not touch the microphones. In order to be recognized, just hold up your pink voter card, and we will bring the microphone to you. Since this is all being recorded, I may ask that you start over if we cannot hear or understand you. Please address all questions and comments directly to me, the moderator, and not to other individuals, and I shall assign somebody to answer. My job is to balance the best flow of new information for the voters to evaluate, while keeping the meeting as efficient as possible. Therefore, it is important that you make your point concisely and to stay on topic. This is especially important this year. The goal is to move this meeting along quickly to minimize people's exposure to COVID-19 in the restrooms and autofumes. If I feel that there is no new information being presented, I shall then call for the vote. I shall only allow one comment or question for each speaker. If you have more than one question or statement to make, please wait until the others have had a turn in order to speak, and that will allow us to have as many people as possible to get an opportunity to speak. Our Constitution gives us the right to make our opinions known, to ask questions. In fact, I encourage you to do so. However, this does not give anybody the right to be disrespectful to other audience members or town officials. Should I feel that's happening, I shall ask that person to stop speaking. Likewise, this is a legislative body and should be contemplative. Please do not cheer, deep horns, or any of those other things, but actually listen to what each person has to say before you make your final decision. Each person should have a tabular ballot that begins with number 25. Please check that that ballot number now. If it starts with a different number, you'll have to go get a new pad of ballots. You can do that by going back to the registration area, and they will accommodate you. Please wear your mask. To facilitate counting, please do not fold the ballots. We will collect the ballots using long-handled baskets that will be brought to your automobile. Simply hold your ballot upside down so others cannot view it, and then drop it into the basket. Please don't touch the basket. I shall call for the articles. The Select Chair, Dave Gavin, will move the article on behalf of the sponsoring organization. All articles have been given to me in advance, and if moved differently, a new version must be given to me in writing. I shall only read an article if it is moved differently than that printed in the warrant. Any amendment or article must be in writing per regulations. Also, it must include the sponsor's name that may be an occasional time when an amendment cannot be accepted, such as an expansion of scope or conflicting with state statutes. To make an amendment, raise your voter card and be recognized and state that you wish to make an amendment to a motion that's already been moved. There is an amendment form in your packet. I shall ask you to state the amendment and ask for a second. If I accept the scope and legality of the amendment, we will then send someone to your automobile to collect the filled-out amendment form. Once I receive the written amendment, I shall call for the vote of the amendment. Expect this process to take several minutes. Voting. We have 11 articles here that require a secret ballot. Assuming that each ballot takes five minutes, that means we will spend 55 minutes just voting. I have come up with a plan to reduce the dead time of collecting the voting and counting of the ballots. The plan is to have two secret ballots or about 10 minutes of voting. You will find in your packet a voting schedule that outlines how I shall approach the voting. We shall move and discuss articles as normal, but we will hold the vote until later. After a group of articles of similar passage requirements, I shall call for the vote for several articles. If a vote passes, we shall move on. If the vote does not pass, we shall be unable to declare which ones passed and which ones didn't, and we will go back and vote each separately. This approach needs ratification of the town meeting. So all those in favor of this modified consent order to reduce the secret ballot, please open your car window and hold up your pink voter cards as high as possible. Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Non-secret ballot votes will be done with the pink voter cards that you have in your packet. Secret ballots will be collected in the baskets around you. Thank you for a great team effort by the town officials, staff, and WAVM and the Boy Scouts for their participation in planning, setup, and support of our again outdoor unusual meetings. Because of rounding, the calculations of 2/3, as described in the warrant, is not quite accurate. To calculate, I double the no votes. If the yes votes are equal to or larger than double the no votes, then the article passes. Blanks are not used in the calculation. So let us begin. I shall entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant in its entirety. Mr. Coleman.
Bill Coleman, 9 Howard Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the warrant in its entirety be waived but be made part of the record of this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article completely.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, please raise your pink voter card. Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We shall now proceed to the warrant. Will the Select Chair, Mr. Dave Gavin, move the first article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Okay. Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Okay. Mr. Gavin.
Yes, this vote will allow the town to allocate the premium of a recent bond sale to the Well Foray Treatment Project. Importantly, this appropriation is not deribed from any new utility rate changes or new tax collection.
Okay, questions? Okay, we will vote later. I'll move on to Article 2. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
And the Finance Committee recommends?
Mr. Gavin.
Thank you. This proposed transfer of sewer stabilization funds are to directly address unanticipated emergency repairs associated with the failure of the rotating biological contractor treatment equipment, also known as RBCs, within the town's wastewater treatment facility.
Have any questions? No questions until we move on to Article 3. Mr. Gavin.
I move to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Mr. Gavin.
This article would create a reserve fund within the Water Utilities Enterprise budget, which would allow the Select Board, acting in its responsibility and roles as the Water and Sewer Commissioners, to swiftly respond to issues that arise from our aging water infrastructure, especially as much of the infrastructure is well beyond its designated life cycle.
Questions? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Mr. Gavin.
This article allows the use of revenue from the golf course to make capital improvements to the course as well as its facilities, specifically to address the longstanding roof failures. The Town's Council on Aging and the Course's Clubhouse, Function Hall, and Kitchen and Pro Shop are all under the failing roof.
Questions? Okay, we shall now vote for Articles 1 through 4, and you'll be using ballot number 25. Will the collectors please collect the ballots? There's a ballot in Row 3 that hasn't been collected. All are down on the right of Row 3 here have not been collected yet. There's also one in Row 7 that has not been collected. Okay, while the counters are tallying the votes, we shall move on to Article 5. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 5 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Mr. Gavin.
The presentation for this article is to be conducted by Chris Arsenal, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Mr. Arsenal.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purpose of this amendment is to update the parking requirements for Section 6.1.5 of the zoning bylaws. There's a few reasons why we wanted to update this section. One of them is just to provide some clarity on some of the parking requirements that are listed in Table C, just so that applicants and town staff in the planning board are all in agreement of what the Table C is trying to say. We also made an addition. If you look at the second row of Table C, we made an addition of retail with a parking requirement of one per 200 square feet of gross floor area. We realized that we didn't have a retail designation inside of this for Table C, and we thought this was a good requirement. Also, some of the changes are just to allow for site-specific considerations so we have flexibility to advocate for the town of Maynard as we go about working with applicants. Should I start over? Okay, I'll do this again. Thank you. So generally speaking, we're looking to update the parking requirements, mostly in Table C as presented. One of the updates is to include a retail designation, which is shown in Row 2. Because we didn't have a retail designation listed in Table C, this will provide clarity for applicants as they work with the town of Maynard. And some of the changes are just to provide site-specific, for us to have some allowance for site-specific considerations so that we have flexibility to advocate for the town of Maynard when applicants come before the planning board. That's all I have for this article. Happy to take questions.
Before I do that, I missed a thing. Do I have a planning board recommendation?
The planning board recommends this article, yes.
Okay, questions? Okay, no further questions. We'll move on to Article 6. Mr. Gavin.
I move to approve Article 6 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon." And the presentation for this article will also come from Mr. Arsenal.
Okay, I'm gonna hang on a second. There is a question on the previous article, which I will allow. Could you please bring a microphone to Row 2? Okay, thank you.
Does this increase the parking space needed for...
Please just pick up and identify yourself.
George Yates, 13 Michael Road. Will this increase the parking space needed for people when they increase the size of their houses? For more people?
Good question. Thank you. This is not for residential designations. This is primarily for any type of applicant that requires a special permit with the planning board. So this is more for a project that would be a commercial establishment downtown.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to Article 6. It's been moved. I have a Finance Committee recommendation. Do I have a planning board recommendation?
Oh, the Finance Committee recommends.
Do I have a planning board recommendation? It didn't shoot us.
The planning board recommends.
Okay. Okay. In Row 5, there is a question.
My name is David Steele, 229 Main Street. I don't think you could see my card. The person here had to hold it up for me. But I have a question about the retail parking. Does that mean that it's limited in terms of proprietor's parking there? Or customers? Because it seems fairly limited in terms of customers if that's the required space for every customer.
Mr. Arsenal? Mr. Nemser?
Yes, Bill Nemser, Planning Director. This would be for the total overall parking spaces required for the establishment. It would include employees, and it would include for customers. Sorry, this would include all parking for employees, customers, and the entire project, what would be assigned. As Mr. Arsenal said, it may be adjusted by the planning board according to site-specific considerations.
Okay, I have another question down in Row 5.
Jordana Beebe, I've met 20 Hillside Street.
Please speak up.
My question is, the retail designation, does that apply to the downtown basin? How does that work with retail that's moving into downtown?
With retail for new projects, it just establishes a base level of parking. When we're talking about downtown where there's a mix of uses, often there are site-specific recommendations made by the planning board and the town engineering staff that may offer an adjustment. The planning board totally recognizes that each site may have specific constraints downtown, and it's put tools in place to try to deal with that on a practical basis.
Any further questions? Okay, so we're on Article 6, which has been... That was Article 5. Article 6, which has been moved, has a planning board recommendation. Presentation now by Mr. Arsenal.
Thank you. For Article 6, this change is proposed mainly for traffic safety. Now, what we would be requiring is that dwelling units that have... Projects that have eight or more dwelling units would have requirement to provide a convenient parking and delivery area. That could be in the front of the building, in the back of the building. But this just allows for safety considerations so that we don't have parking and delivery services occurring in front of buildings where it's non-designated.
Any questions on Article 6? Okay, the results of Articles 1 through 4 is 165 for, 3 against. It requires 2/3, so 2 times 3 is 6. And we have 165, so that's more than 6. The article passes. Articles pass. Moving on to Article 7. Mr. Gavin.
I move to approve Article 7 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Do I have a planning board recommendation?
The planning board recommends.
Mr. Arsenal, can you...
Yes. Article 7 is... These changes are meant to provide some clarity about parking, new parking spaces that would be designated during construction of special permits, mainly in the downtown district is our large consideration. But for example, you can see that we're changing how we measure the length and width of parking spaces that are angled. And this was just to provide clarity to applicants so that they understand specifics about how we go about measuring parking spaces so that there's no confusion later on. Happy to take any questions on this.
Questions? I have a question in Row 2. White car in the middle.
Hello, Marie Gunnison...
Please speak up.
Marie Gunnison, 119 Parker. My question... I can see that the 90-degree is reduced by 5 inches, but my question regards the length of 90-degree stall shall be reduced by 2 feet to accommodate overhang of landscape areas, whereas the width...
Could you hold the microphone closer, please?
The length of the 90-degree stall may be reduced by 2 feet to accommodate overhang? Is reduced, correct? The next note around the width is about increasing where there's an obstacle such as the landscaping or wall.
Mr. Nemser?
Thank you for the question. The language is correct. The first line here, "length of 90-degree stall may be reduced by 2 feet to accommodate overhang of landscape area," that's in a situation where if you have a parking stall and there is landscaping in front of it, where a car overhang could overhang that landscape, we will allow a reduction of the length of that parking space. This is a more modern consideration on how to go about designing parking. The second change is also correct. This is when a car would park next to a landscape, and on the side of the car would be the landscaped area. We're allowing parking spaces to reduce the width of that parking space when the door would swing into an area that's not next to another adjacent car. So I believe the language is correct. Yeah, so yes, the language is correct in this.
Other questions? On Article 7? Okay, no further questions. We'll move on to Article 8. Mr. Gavin.
I move to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Planning Board recommendation?
The planning board recommends.
Mr. Arsenal?
The... This change is to add a sentence that... And I'll just read it. It's pretty straightforward. Projects seeking a special permit for a location within the downtown overlay district are also required to demonstrate consistency with Section 9.4.6 Downtown Overlay District Special Permit Criteria. We just wanted to make it clear to applicants that if they were to read 10.4.2, which is the changes we're making in here, that they just reminded them that they also need to comply with Section 9. just need, they just reminded them that they also need to comply with Section 9.4.6. It's just a cross-reference, that means that both of these sections are applicable to applicants.
Questions on Article Eight? Okay, move on to Article Nine. Now technically, Article Nine does not require a secret ballot, however, it does require two-thirds vote. So I shall use this ballot to establish a count, so that we can now vote on, after we discuss this, we will be now voting on Articles Five through Nine. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee?
The finance committee recommends.
Okay, Mr. Gavin.
Thank you. This article will restrict the disturbance of land relative to a specific section of the rail trail. I'll go into a little bit of the history. When we were designing or building, rather, the rail trail, in the area of the location of the rail trail near Concord Street and Acton Street, over where I believe the business is known as the Cat Shack, there was some, there was some contamination found from way back in our history. And so it was all remediated, it has all been remediated. And what this article would do is to prevent any further disruption of that land, in order to assure that we prevent any further contamination of that area.
Questions on Article Nine? Okay, so we're gonna be voting on Articles Five. Oh, I got Row Two, I have a question in a gray car.
Hi, Nancy Tenney on Brook Street. I believe you're referring to the Cat Cottage.
I'm sorry, that is true. I apologize for the, for that error.
Additional questions? Okay, so we'll now vote on Articles Five through Nine. As I said, Article Nine does not necessarily require a secret ballot, but I'm gonna be using the ballot to get a count, because it does require two-thirds. One other thing here is that if there is an objection, because there were some questions on the earlier articles, if you want to separate out and vote any of these articles separately, if you make a request, and we get several other voters also wanting to do that, we can break them out separately. If anybody would like to break out one, please raise your pink card. All right, we'll proceed then to vote for Articles Five through Nine, using ballot number Anybody's ballot that has not been collected, could you raise your pink card? We'll send somebody over. Okay, we'll move on to Article Ten. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article Ten as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends.
Gavin.
Thank you. Since the current general fund budget was approved in the spring, more information has been collected relative to both revenue and expenses, requiring some adjustments to our budget, including less revenue from the state due to an increased assessment of $25,000, updated operational costs for the town clerk's office for $10,000, funding the unbudgeted increase to the liability insurance for the town of $37,000, providing funds for personnel contracts that have been or will be negotiated in the amount of approximately $30,000, and paying for a portion of the salary to reintroduce a full-time health agent for nearly $48,000. In addition, we also need to account for revenue from community impact payments submitted by the marijuana retail establishments. New tax growth reported since the creation of the current budget provides for a balanced budget with these adjustments. Lastly, updated debt service accounting requires less collection from taxpayers, resulting in an overall decrease in appropriation for this article.
Okay, so this requires a secret ballot, and we haven't had the results from the previous yet, so we'll have to wait for those results before we can proceed. When we do vote, you'll be using ballot number 27. I would like to take this opportunity to talk about volunteers, if anybody is interested in participating in town government. We have open positions, particularly on the finance committee, among other committees. If you are interested, please stop by after the meeting and give us your name, or send an email into the town clerk, and we would be happy to have volunteers participate in making the town the great town that it is.
Town Meeting to the members of the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board as we're now known, who are all here today. They are volunteers, as you all know, and they put in an extraordinary amount of time, and I think it's only appropriate that I recognize them here today. First, I'd like to introduce Armin Dear-Pakirian. Armin, take stand if you can see people. Our Selectman, Chris De Silva. Selectman, Justine St. John, and Select Board Member, Jeff.
All right, the results of Articles Five through Nine, it was 181 yes, two no's. Two times two is four, and 181 being greater than four, then motion carries. You'll now vote on Article Ten, which is a secret ballot, on ballot number 27, and requires a majority. Will the collectors please collect the ballots?
And ladies and gentlemen, it's Jeff Swanberg, who I was blanking, totally blanking on. I apologize, Jeff.
Okay, anybody whose ballot didn't get collected, please raise your pink card. Yep, last row, Row Seven, gray car. Actually, it's two, yeah. All right, we'll move on to Article Eleven. Article Eleven, this article actually has no legal value, as the street names do not define the properties. To be meaningful, the town needs a deed with meats and bounds, or similar for streets, as something to accept. The town can't accept a street without knowing who has an interest in it. Further, the Select Board is required to, under statute, to lay out a street prior to acceptance. To vote against this possibly could affect petitioner's ability at some point in the future, so with a better prepared article. Therefore, I would recommend that we pass over this article, and to do that, I need someone to make a motion to pass over.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Coleman, 9 Howard Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that Article Eleven be passed over, and no action be taken, no action on this article be taken.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have motion and a second, so we'll vote on the motion to pass over. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The motion to pass over carries. We'll move on to Article Twelve. Mr. Gavin.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter Forty, Section 5B, Paragraph Three, and establish a special revenue stabilization fund for 100% of the receipts from the collection of payments from the host community agreements with marijuana establishments.
Do I have a second? Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends.
Okay, I'm gonna read the article, because it was moved slightly differently than originally printed in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter Forty, Section 5B, Chapter Three, and establish a special revenue stabilization fund for 100% of the receipts from the collection of payments from the host community agreements with marijuana establishments. Do I have a second? Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends.
Okay, I'm gonna read the article, because it was moved slightly differently than originally printed in the warrant, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter Forty, Section 5B, Chapter Three, and establish a special revenue stabilization fund for 100% of the receipts from the collection of payments from the host community agreements with marijuana establishments. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you. This article creates a stabilization fund for the forthcoming collection of community impact payments that will be submitted to the town by marijuana establishments located here in Maynard. A stabilization fund will provide for transparency and widespread public approval of these funds, as the use of the funds would require the approval of a transfer by Town Meeting voters.
Okay, discussion. Questions? Yes, I recognize the gray car.
Hi, Sally Bubier, Butler Ave. I'm just curious, what are some examples of expenses that this would be used for? Thank you.
Specifically, the enhancement funds are limited to the, to community impacts. For example, if we feel that there are traffic needs downtown, if there are parking needs downtown, if there are other issues that are being affected by the marijuana facilities themselves. And I'll turn it to Greg Johnson, to see if he has any other comments to make.
Town Administrator, Greg Johnson, no further comments. It has not yet been determined what these payments might be used for.
And answer the question? Okay, any further questions? I have one down in the back, Row Six, I believe it is, black car.
John Moynah, Upper Beacon Street.
Can't hear you, please speak in closer to the microphone.
John Moynah from Upper Beacon Street. I'm wondering what the process will be to determine where those funds go.
As with any other, as with any other allocation, it would be transferred with approval by Town Meeting voters.
Any other questions? All right, this, this requires a two-thirds vote, which I would normally do as a ballot vote, but if we get a unanimous vote here, we can move on, but otherwise, we'll use the ballot. So let me try, all those in favor, please raise, oh, wait a minute, I have a whole bunch of pink cards over on the left.
Yes, Sarah Measures, 17 Sunset. Wondering if this provision is the same for other businesses in town, or it's just for marijuana businesses?
We, thank you for the question. We only get community impact fees from the marijuana establishments, and that impact fee was set as a provision of the state law that allowed for marijuana to come to the Commonwealth. And as a result of Maynard voting in favor, when we created the approval, we then negotiated community agreements that included these impact fees as per the law. So it's only marijuana businesses that give us these enhancement fees, and only through the guidance of the...
Okay, move on to Article 13. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, plug.
Hello. Green Maynard is excited to propose this bylaw to eliminate single-use, thin-film checkout bags in Maynard. This bylaw would encourage residents to bring reusable bags instead. It would allow businesses to distribute reusable or recycled paper bags in place of plastic bags. Plastic bags are difficult to recycle, and they cannot be recycled curbside in Maynard. This leads to 90 percent of them being thrown away or misplaced in recycling bins, contaminating the recycling stream. Eliminating plastic bags in Maynard will also reduce the trash collected and decrease our waste management costs. Maynard residents use 4 million plastic bags each year, which significantly contributes to the overall waste of the town and usage of fossil fuels to produce the bags. Plastic bags are used for an average of 12 minutes, but they overrun our waste systems and take as long as 1,000 years to break down. And when they do break down, they will break into microplastics that are harmful to our environment forever. Additionally, plastic bags have a disproportionate environmental impact because of their large surface area and the ease at which they can pass through waterways, be ingested by animals, and clog storm drains and recycling facilities. Currently, plaster bag, plastic bag litter can be found across Maynard, detracting from the natural beauty of our town. As of this year, there are already 144 towns and cities in Massachusetts that have successfully passed plastic bag bans, including nearly all surrounding towns. The Cambridge Recycling Advisory Committee reported recently that their ban led to a 50 to an 80 percent reduction of all single-use plastic bags. Eliminating single-use plastic bags has had relatively little impact on businesses in these towns, and most of their businesses are fully in support of the policy. We would like to add Maynard to this list. The Maynard Board of Health, who would be enforcing this bylaw through their existing inspections, has already voted in support of the single-use plastic bag ban, and there will be no additional burdens to the town. The Finance Committee and the Maynard Conservation Commission have also voted in support of this bylaw. Additionally, Green Maynard has met with business owners throughout the town, and roughly 40 businesses have voiced their support of the bylaw. We are hoping that people will largely bring their own bags, but if businesses still choose to distribute bags at point of sale, this bylaw permits them to provide a recycled paper, paper or reusable bag. We also have free bags available to residents who may not have them, and Green Maynard has distributed over 200 upcycled bags. Voting in favor of Bylaw 13 is an important step Maynard can take towards beginning to tackle the climate crisis and preserving our environment. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Okay, no questions, we'll vote. All those in favor, please, this is open majority, please raise your pink card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink card. Okay, the majority is in favor, the motion passes. Moving on to Article 14. Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant, except with the following changes. Replace Section 4, Exceptions, Paragraph A with the following. Food or goods packaged or prepared outside the town of Maynard are exempt from the provisions of this bylaw, provided such food or goods are not altered, packaged, or repackaged, and delete the words "to do or act thereon."
Okay, do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, Ms. Orion, Orion Green.
Before I begin, it occurred to me...
Hang on, please.
All right, closer, okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Before I begin, it occurred to me that you may not know what polystyrene is. It is the cheapest and most toxic of all plastics, with the recycling symbol 6 on the bottom. Clear polystyrene is used for takeout wear, like glasses, bowls, clamshells, and some utensils. Styrofoam is another form of polystyrene, used for hot cups, foam plates, some egg cartons, and packing materials like peanuts. It is cheap and convenient, but it is hazardous to you and the environment. Polystyrene is made from styrene, a known carcinogen and neurotoxin. Its feedstock comes from fracking, a process that harms workers and the environment, releasing highly toxic chemicals. When styrofoam is used with food that is hot, fat, or acidic, the styrene leaches into the food. Polystyrene harms wildlife. The foam form is often mistaken as food for birds, animals, and fish. Estimates suggest that 1 million myrene animals are killed each year from plastic pollution. When polystyrene is mixed with other plastics in single-stream recycling, it contaminates them, making them less usable. Polystyrene never bi-degrades, but fragments into smaller bits called microplastics, which stay in the landscape and ocean and our bodies forever. Most important, there are many alternatives to polystyrene. This bylaw would allow less toxic plastics, as well as biodegradable and compostable bioplastics, paper and woodenware, and the highly recyclable gas, glass, and aluminum. However, the best choice is always an article that can be reused. We have gotten used to cheap, plentiful, single-use items, but they are threatening our health and destroying our world. Green Maynard hopes that by making people aware of their choices, we can move the town toward more healthful and sustainable practices. Please join 52 other towns in Massachusetts by passing Article 14 and voting polystyrene out of our lives. Thank you.
Okay, back to Article 12, 194, 9 against, the motion carries. Any questions on Article 14? Okay, Row number, Row 3. So I have, I have a red car in Row 3.
Sarah Measures, 17 Sunset. Orion said, said it all, almost. I thought that was fantastic.
Please speak closer to the microphone.
Okay, that, Orion, that was fantastic. I just wanted to add a little bit, because Green Maynard has approached a lot of Maynard businesses, and two-thirds of the small businesses approached, signed their support of this bill and the previous one. The big chains involved that we approached, Dunkin' Donuts, 7-Eleven, Cumberland Farms, and CVS, all stated that making the switch would not impact their businesses, and it simply implied ticking a box on their computer. The manager at CVS said, "I can't believe we're still using plastic in this town." Many of the small businesses in town have already made the switch to more environmentally friendly products, and three-quarters, that's about 34, of the other small businesses were happy to make the switch. Thank you.
Row 5, black car.
Steven Wagner, Charles, 13 Charles Street. I voted without reservation for the preceding article. I will vote for this one, partly because of the limits on what it covers. There are other kinds of polystyrene besides the ones that are aimed at in this particular measure, and I think the rhetoric at the end of Green Maynard's handout, saying that styrene is completely unnecessary, with the implication of all forms, goes too far. I approve of getting rid of non-reusable containers in food and in packing, but styrene in the form of foam core, for example, is used by architects and artists and others in making models and demonstrations and so on. It is used in construction. The foam in that case is covered with other material that does not provide, cause problems, and there are great many products that are made of high-impact polystyrene, which is derived from styrene. The feedstock is not all from fracking. It's been derived from petroleum for a long time, and I suspect will continue to be so because in some cases, substitution is not feasible. And again, that's not covered by what we're doing here, which I think is proper. The, the basic point here, that we need to... Okay, I, I think I've made my point. Thank you.
Okay, next question?
Way in the back.
Way, Row 7?
Glenn Conig, 10 Charles Street. I understood there was a change to Section 4 on the exemptions, but I couldn't quite hear it. Could you repeat what we were doing to change Section 4, please?
Let me ask the Finance Committee to answer that question, because they took a different position, and they can explain it probably best. Elena?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I did want to explain that the Finance Committee recommendation has changed from the handout that was given in your packet today, due to this change, a number 4. And to answer your question, the change has to do with the exemption applying not only to food prepared or packaged outside, but food or goods prepared or packaged outside. This was a concern for the Finance Committee. We wanted to make sure that our retail establishments, which purchase products that may have been packaged in polystyrene, would not have a problem with this part of the article. So that's the change. It's food and goods prepared or packaged outside of the town of Maynard is exempt. The Finance Committee met this morning to have a discussion and a revote on our recommendation due to the amended language that was presented in the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We got one additional question in the rear?
Hi, this is Craig Ultimus from Garfield Ave. I actually have an amendment that I would like to offer. This is an amendment to the exemption that was just amended. I want to be clear, I'm fully in support of this proposal, I think it's critical. I just want to add the words "until 2026" to the exemption, so that the businesses that are having packaging brought in from out of town have five years to find, to get those suppliers to change their packaging, or to find new suppliers. So add the words "until 2026" to the exemption, so that businesses, again, have five years to either find new source of not using these plastic containers, or to convince their suppliers to stop using that plastic.
Okay, I have a motion to amend. I need that motion in writing. I hope you filled out the form, please get it up to the front here as soon as possible. We will wait until we have your amendment. Okay, so I have an amendment for Article 14, by adding the following. Food or goods packaged or prepared outside of the town of Maynard are exempt from packages, from the provisions of this bylaw, provided such food or goods are not altered, packaged, or repackaged until... packaged in polystyrene—would not have a problem with this part of the article. So that's the change. It's food and goods prepared or packaged outside of the Town of Maynard is exempt. The Finance Committee met this morning to have a discussion and a revote on our recommendation due to the amended language that was presented in the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We got one additional question in the rear?
Hi, this is Craig Ultimus from Garfield Ave. I actually have an amendment that I would like to offer. This is an amendment to the exemption that was just amended. I want to be clear, I'm fully in support of this proposal. I think it's critical. I just want to add the words "until 2026" to the exemption, so that the businesses that are having packaging brought in from out of town have five years to find—to get those suppliers to change their packaging or to find new suppliers. So to add the words "until 2026" to the exemption, so that businesses, again, have five years to either find new source of not using these plastic containers or to convince their suppliers to stop using that plastic.
Okay. I have a motion to amend. I need that motion in writing. I hope you filled out the form. Please get it up to the front here as soon as possible. We will wait until we have your amendment. The question has an amendment. They're going to have to write it down, and we're going to have to bring it up. Oh, by the way, do I have a second? I have a second, okay? Thank you. Food or goods packaged or prepared outside of the Town of Maynard are exempt from the provisions of this bylaw, provided such food or goods are not altered, packaged, or repackaged And we have a second. So discussion. Okay, up front here, the black Honda.
Peter Campbell, 15 Assavitt Street in Maynard. I understand the motivation behind this amendment, but I do not support this amendment. I think we have a well-considered question before us, and we're free to act in the future if we want to then ban stuff from coming out of town, but at this point, I do not support this amendment.
Okay. Down way in the rear, probably row number nine. I have a car down there on the left, my left.
Leslie Bryant, 27 Omore Ave. I think we need to act on this now, and there are several restaurants in Maynard that are already using recyclable containers for their takeout food. And if a restaurant has questions about where they can source, I suggest that they go visit these other establishments.
Row two, black Jeep.
Tom Frazier, Erickson's Ice Cream. I kind of agree with the gentleman in the very back, which is the containers that are pre-printed, which we have about five years' stock of, that are very hard to source at this time, so they're very—
Speak up, please.
The global supply chain and access to some of these recyclables is not easy to get to. Right now, there is at least two to three years of wait for those goods.
I have another one, row nine in the back. No, I guess we don't have any more questions, and I'm looking at the orange thing instead. Okay. So we will now vote on the amendment. Oh, okay. Sorry, I have one on row three.
This is Rick Mader, 34 Lincoln Street. What is the date in which the original article goes into effect, and what is the date in which the amendment will go into effect?
I would ask Town Council to answer that question.
This article goes into effect six months after the date of approval by the Attorney General pursuant to the proposed bylaw.
I had a question over here on the right. My right.
Thank you. David Hunter, 29 Omore Avenue. First off, I support this article wholeheartedly. I thought this United States of America, ingenuity, looking to make changes—I mean, this is a no-brainer, people. First off, I want to explain to you that I own my own business here in town, okay? And we recycle constantly everything we use and what comes in from our suppliers. We're very proactive with that. The other thing I want to acknowledge is, for most of you who have never been able to leave the town or leave the state and had the opportunity to travel overseas, I can tell you, I have for 28 years. I've traveled to India, China, Austria, Germany, all over Europe, South America. And some of the things I see—I see the difference between our country and others, where they're further advanced and others are very behind. You go to India, the trash is all over the place, okay? Mexico, another country. You go to Germany, Austria, Switzerland, you can eat off the street. They're very progressive. It's time we finally make a change and get plastic out of—the—as far as consumables involving plastics—out of our society. These other countries are using alternatives. People bring reusable bags. If they want a bag, they got to pay for it. So there's no time to waste here. Just because it's not piling up in your backyard, you don't see it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It exists. I've seen it firsthand. I've seen what other countries are doing better than us.
I just want to interrupt for a second, because we're talking about the amendment now. We're not talking about the main article.
That's right. I support this amendment, but I'm just making education here to everybody to know. Let's vote on this and move forward in the right direction, people. There's plenty of alternatives out there and technology to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We're first going to vote on the amendment. Oh, we got another question in the rear, okay?
Jonathan Scraw, 23 Marlborough Street. We've amended Section 4 exemptions, Part A. Have we changed Part B, or is that still in the amended article?
Part B still exists, yes. It hasn't been changed. So we're going to vote now on the amendment, not on the main article. So you're going to vote whether to include 2026 or to leave it undefined for the moment. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your pink card. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise your pink card. The opposition has it. The amendment does not carry. All right. We're back now to the main article. And so Article 14. This is an open majority vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please raise your pink cards. All those opposed, raise your pink cards. The motion carries. Moving on to Article 15. Mr. Gavin.
I move to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Gavin.
Is Bill Coleman going to do this, or—
Well, you're the presenter, right?
Bill, Bill Coleman, I believe you are going to make the presentation.
So you're going to read your text, and he's going to answer the question.
All right. All right. Just as a matter of explanation, then, passage of this article would replace the current nuisances bylaw with a new bylaw. The proposed bylaw reorganizes the old bylaw for clarity and is also updated for changes required by state law and recommendations from Town Council. Some changes and clarifications have been added to respond to concerns from previous town meetings, especially about bikes and skateboards.
Questions? All right. Mr. Coleman, as Chairman of the Bylaw Committee, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
I'd like to say that from last year, when we tried to pass this before, we listened to the town voters. We went back to the drawing board. We reviewed it again, double-checked our references to town law, found a few where we were mistaken on, which, for example, the fine for bicycle violations is only $20. I believe we had it listed as more. We vetted this through the Chief of Police, through other members of the Town Hall, where the sections of the bylaw would follow—fall under them, and got their input from that and made changes to that. I also like to say that, basically, we are trying to update this so that it is current. And bylaws can always be changed. You know, we can come back—if there are issues that still left to be resolved, come to us, attend one of our meetings on Zoom, and we can discuss it, work through the system, and bring any other changes forward in the annual town meeting. So I would like to just ask if we can please pass this, so at least we can bring this chapter of the bylaws into modern era.
Thank you. I believe we had a question down—
Marie Gunnerson, Parker Street in Maynard. If I'm reading this correctly, Section 7 and 8 are eliminated entirely, so that would allow indecent markings and graffiti. Am I reading that correct?
Mr. Coleman.
Yeah. From what I understand, with Town Council and also Chief of Police, it becomes a freedom of speech issue, but then the thing is that if you are marking something on property, the property owner can, you know, file a complaint against it, also because, you know, you're trespassing, you're vandalizing someone's property. And also, if it's onto town property, we can enforce it there. It doesn't need to be through bylaw. There are other state laws that are reflected on that.
We have another question. Okay. Over on my left.
Loretta West, Apple Ridge Road. My question is why, in Section 5, does the—this section only apply to public cemeteries?
It was on the vice of Town Council that this is basically—because the town owns that, we can have a bylaw on that. The only other cemetery that I'm aware of in town is St. Bridgetts, and if somebody was doing something to vandalize or do that, it's that they would have to then file a complaint against it. It's not for the town to go actively pursuing it. If I have that correct—and I'm getting a "yes" for Town Council, so I do have it correct.
Okay. We have another question down back.
Ruan Ultimus here from Garfield Ave. I'm just trying to understand one of the sections. It says Section 9, it talks about people not being able to throw stones, snowballs, sticks, or their projectiles, kick a football, play any game, which a ball is used, et cetera, in or across any public ways of the town. Does this prevent, say, children from playing soccer in a low-use street, or people from having a snowball fight in their neighborhood? I'm just trying to understand what this section actually means.
All right. It is rather broad—yeah, can't talk right today. Broad. Basically, it is sort of viewing that—like for snowball fights, throwing sticks, stones, whatever—it's basically so that you're not throwing things at traffic, endangering a driver if a snowball hits the front window on it. It's not—if someone's having a snowball fight in their yard, that's fine, as long as everybody's agreeing to having that. See what else. Playing soccer in the street, it may be that, yeah, you can do it in a very low-use street, sort of a dead-end street, but it's also a thing where—we're trying to write this as—to be as broad as possible, and we want to be able to say that if a street is more heavily used, and some kids are trying to do that, we don't want them to be, you know, hit by a car who doesn't see them, you know, because with distracted driving. We want them to be safe. And this is a way that a town official can go and say, "Hey, kids, you know, play in the yard, not in the street. Try to do this, because we're trying to keep them safe on this." Did I answer your question?
We have another question up front, I believe. Row six. Row six.
Ken Neuhauser, 47 Parker Street. I have a question relative to Section 3, looking for a clarification, and the clarification is, does this section apply to snow removal? And the question, will the town have resources to remove snow from streets in a way that does not obstruct sidewalks and bury fire hydrants?
Section 3 does not apply to snow removal. However, there is a section—which I have to page through it here—that does apply to snow removal.
Joanna, row seven, two cars, question.
Just give me a moment.
Some more questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Someone's a little bit faster looking through this than me. In the new Section 15, it says, "No person or person shall place or cause to be placed in any or on any public street or sidewalk. Snow which may hinder—be a hindrance to pedestrians or vehicular traffic. Whoever violates this provision of this section shall be liable to a penalty listed below: First offense, $100; Second offense, $200; Third offense, $300; and for each offense thereafter."
Question, row seven.
Andy Morline, 123 Summer Street. I was the one who opposed this amendment—or this article—in the past. I continue, too. There's a capricious part about bicycles and police officers interacting in a way that's written into an ordinance, where an 18-year-old can have his bike taken away, an under-18-year-old can have his bicycle taken away for a period not to exceed 15 months—days. There's just a capriciousness about this law. Without having bicycle lanes in our town, I don't think we need to talk about where they can ride. When I was—the day after this was brought up in town meeting, I watched a mother with two young children bike-riding on the street in front of CVS. There is no place else to ride but on the sidewalk in front of CVS. Let's vote against this thing. Let's send it back. I know there's a lot of really important things here, but the bicycle parts are not adequately written.
May I address this, please? From—
Let him finish. Anything else, President, that you want to say?
Um—
Okay. Mr. Coleman.
In the section on bicycles, which is—
Section 17.
And we're talking about the subsection B. All the subsections of that—from 1 through 9 come directly from mass general law. If we abolish this whole section of nuisances, they would still exist because they are part of the general law. The complaint that you have against it is not against the nuisance bylaw as it currently exists or as we are proposing to change it. It is against mass general law, and I think I have it listed in the comment section, Chapter 85, Section 11B. If you have a chance to pull out your phone and look it up, you'll see that they're all listed there. So it does make no difference whether you vote for it or not. They still exist and will continue to exist. So there are many other changes that we have in the bylaws, and you can see the changes in the red-line copy that was provided in your packet to see exactly what the changes are. We are trying to update the bicycle law, because right now, we have it saying that you have to ride single file. And currently, according to state law, you are allowed to ride to abreast on the street, except when—being passed by motorists, that you are supposed to form a single lane—or single line—for to assist with that. We are trying to bring this into the 21st century, because, as far as I can tell, many of these parts of the bylaws are decades old, and we're trying to bring them at least to a modern era. Thank you.
I have a question over here. The gray car on row two. Blue car, sorry. Blue car, yes, on my left. Yes, you're looking around. He just rose his pink card, and you just give him the microphone.
Well, I guess you just answered my question.
Please speak into the microphone.
Sorry. Oh, aren't I? Leslie Bryant, 27 Omore Ave. I guess you just answered my question. I like to ride to the library, which is downtown, or I like to ride to CVS and the— And the streets downtown are absolutely unsafe to ride on once you get off the rail trail.
Okay, Row Two.
David Steele, 229 Main Street. I have two questions. One of them is about Section Nine, the other is Section Fifteen. I'm assuming on Section Nine, letter A and letter E, that there'd be some latitude in that. I mean, if a kid, for example, is throwing a snowball, not intending to throw it across the street, I don't see that that should be a violation. And also, if you're in front of your own home wanting to wheel, a wheelbarrow from one side of your property to another, go up to the sidewalk to do so, then is that really an infraction? I'm assuming there's latitude in those cases, but just like clarification. Session Fifteen, my question is more pertinent. And that is, with the heavy snows we've had some years, I've had to carry snow great distances in order to not allow something to go on the sidewalk. And even then, did not always succeed. So I'm wondering if there's any kind of provision that can be made in terms of, you know, some kind of snow emergencies or something with heavy snow, that that would not be considered a fine.
Mr. Coleman.
That isn't something where I really can address. It would be on how the DPW would address it about the snow. And for the other items that you mentioned, it really would be more to the Chief of Police to sort of how, what latitude is given on that. Okay.
A question Row Two, after my left over here.
George Yates, 13 Michael Road.
Please speak up.
George Yates, 13 Michael Road, Mader. I'm just looking at number eight, where you can't carry something. I just want to make the comment that I, when I first moved to Maynard, I had to ride the bike to the grocery store and come back with a bag of groceries. I don't know. I'm not doing that now, so it won't affect me. But is that possible now? Or you got to carry a backpack or something?
That is directly from Mass. General Law.
Okay.
Over here, Row Two, to my right.
Yes, thank you. Lois Tetrow, 22 Crane Avenue. I'm concerned about Section Eleven, which would essentially make all motorized scooters against the law, from the way I'm reading it. Now, my kid does not take a motorized scooter to school. But I see a lot of children that do. This, and I've noticed that their parents have taught them to be courteous and safe. And everybody gets to school just fine. The school bus is not free. This alone, to me, let alone the whole bicycle nonsense, I will not support this article. I think it's horribly written.
Row Six, please.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking at Section Nine, E, where it says, "Nor drive wheel or draw any coach, cart, or other carriage, et cetera." I just would like to see consideration for people with handicaps written into that before I could vote for this. Would this mean wheelchairs or motorized...
No, not at all. It does not mean wheelchairs or anything like that.
Okay, well, it seems like that should be specifically stated. Just my thought.
So Row Seven, in the back corner.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator? Can I point out something?
No, hang on.
Okay.
Let this question go. Go ahead, in the back there.
Yes. I'm Glenn Koenig, and I'm at 10 Charles Street. In the previous town meeting, I raised objections to this article as it was at that time constructed. And however, today, I'm taking a different approach, which is, I'm in favor of voting for this article. I've read the state statute. I realize that one of the problems may be that the state language is under a section called Public Ways, not nuisances. I think part of the problem is that the whole bicycle thing under a nuisance article is a mistake. However, I'm willing to vote for it now because I trust that this town meeting in the future will be able to come back and make amendments to what we have here, that it's good enough for now. And, you know, if there's anything we can find through the actual practice enforcement of it, I'd be much willing to support other articles to make changes at that time. But I don't want to reject the entire article with all the sections because of the problems in the bicycle area. And I also want to talk to my state representative about removing certain sections of the state law which are clearly antiquated. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the previous comment there, referring to Nine, E. If you look at the redline copy that was provided in your packet, anything that is in black text is what is currently in the bylaw. So as I said earlier, whether you vote for it or against it, it still remains in the bylaw. If it's something that you object to, we can address it at a later date.
Okay, we had a question, okay, the white car on Row Two.
Marie Gunnison, Parker Street, Maynard. Section Fifteen regarding the snow on street or sidewalk, does this also apply to the DPW or not? DPW and contracting, contractors.
So Justin is walking up to respond to that question, I think.
Due to public safety, the method and means in which we clear and conduct snow for operations on public rights away have to push snow to the sidewalks. We clear sidewalks in a priority manner based on school walkability, and that will remain the same. This is in regards, this bylaw would be effect for residents placing excessive snow onto sidewalks from their private property.
Okay, do we have any additional questions?
Dick, yeah.
Oh, okay, I have one right up front here.
Hi, Peter Campbell, 15 Assavitt Street. I support this article and will recommend passage. I wanted to note that the comments about playing ball in the street, the snow regulations, and the motorized scooters, they're all existing bylaws in the town. This is just a rewrite to clarify the bylaw and make it better to enforce. And I would recommend passage of this article.
I have a question back here.
My question is about...
Could you please identify yourself?
My name is Maureen Gomes. I live on Railroad Street. And my question is about the snow removal. You guys don't remove the snow off the sidewalk or off the street. And every year, it's a nightmare for the children that live on the street. They're falling in the snow, they're getting hurt, and there's nowhere for them to play, even around in the backyard. They're always on the street. And I tried to keep the backyard safe for the children, but the backyard isn't safe either. And I would like the DP, the town, to start addressing Railroad Street because there are a lot of young children that live there, and they're not safe.
Okay, so noted, but that's not germane to the bylaw. And the selectmen will take note of that as will the DPW. Any other questions I have here? Okay, so no more questions. We'll now vote on Article Fifteen, which is open majority. All of those in favor of the bylaw motion, please raise your pink card. Okay, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink card. There are more pink cards for the affirmative, so the motion carries. Moving on to Article Sixteen. Mr. Gavin.
I move to approve Article... It says, "Move to approve Article as printed in the warrant, except the words 'to do or act thereon.'"
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Coleman, Mr. Gavin.
Passage of this article similarly would change the wording in the town bylaws to set the term of alternate planning board members to three years and thereby align the wording in the town bylaws with the wording in the town's zoning bylaws.
Questions? Okay, now, let me just back up for a second and say Article Ten was 182, four, and seven against, and the motion carries. And now we'll vote on Article Sixteen. All those in favor, please raise your pink card. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your pink card. Motion carries. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank WAVM, and Machman Asian and his crew, also the Boy Scout Troop 130, who was your collectors and microphone folks. So if you want to beep your horns or clap for them, now's the time. And I thank everyone for attending. And if we have any volunteers for any of the town boards, we'd love to have you. I will now accept a motion to dissolve the meeting. Mr. Coleman.
Bill Coleman, 9 Howie Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, the meeting is over. Thank you for attending. Thank you.